Good evening. It's five thirty PM on Wednesday, February twenty first, two thousand twenty four, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall one, one, two, three, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, also our president, council, also our president, our council president, Jason Welker, councilors Deb Rule, Justin Dick, and Pam Duquette. Councilman Schreiber is a bit under the weather and didn't want to spread his germ, so he's joining us remotely, and Councilman Espiro should be arriving shortly. Under the city's adopted code of ethics and civility as presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Then, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do announcements and reports. I guess, are there any announcements from the council at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rule.
I would like to move to remove item number seven A, Sandpoint's continued participation in JPA from the agenda because there were no materials posted with this item for council or the public to review in depth.
Councilwoman Rule has moved to remove item seven A from the agenda. Is there a second to that?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a second, but I would also like to direct staff to do a second workshop on the JPA. I thought the first workshop went very well, and I thank all the parties for being involved in it. There's still quite a few questions that I have at this point in time, and we can either go into them in detail now and set up the workshop, or at least have the opportunity to set up another workshop, and council in the days leading up to that can get those questions out onto the table and get them into an agenda.
Councilman Dick, so is that a second, just so we can discuss it?
That is.
Okay. Motion moved by Councilman Rule, second by Councilman Dick. Is there some discussion?
I too would like to have another work session. Think it would be good for everybody, and I did not get a chance to look at all the bylaws in the draft that Mr. Frank sent, so I'd like to look at all that.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Espiro has joined the meeting at five thirty four. Any other council discussion on this item? I would just add, council members, that I didn't feel it appropriate for me to direct the council to hold another workshop. I was looking for your guidance and leadership on that, so whatever action you prefer to take on this item, I'm not sure it needs to be removed. I actually prefer it remain, and that during this item, you direct myself and staff to work with the authorities to schedule a meeting or take other action as you described, but this is specifically to help guide me moving forward. I didn't want to make a unilateral decision on this, so that's why it's on there with no attachments. So with that, I would, is this a roll call route?
Mr. Mayor, I would, for point of order, the motion was to remove item seven A from the agenda. Was it to postpone, and if so, was there an amendment to that motion to also direct staff to hold another work session? Just want clarification on the motion, please.
I could motion to do another workshop, if that what you're asking, an amendment?
I believe Councilor Dick
You already did that?
Speaking to make that motion, or does council wish to take this up at seven A as opposed to removing it?
So council, I think it's appropriate, we can discuss all this in the order that it's agendized. I don't see a conflict. I'm not asking for any action other than your direction. It's regularly agendized order, so I would have a preference that the motion fail, and we can just work through the agenda as presented.
If the motion is not removed, Mr. Mayor, if the motion is not rescinded, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and do a vote on that, on whether, on it being removed from the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Espiro?
I came in a little late, sorry. Deb, did you make, you made a motion to remove it from the agenda?
Correct, under the premise that no articles were attached, so council didn't have an opportunity to review, nor did the public have an opportunity to see any new material that's presented, so I didn't feel it appropriate to be on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm hearing you say that you'd like us just to rescind that and just have it fail, and then we can direct staff?
Correct, when it's agendized.
Okay. Do you mind explaining why you prefer that, just so I can understand?
Well, just, I think it's quite, it's simpler.
Okay.
We can talk about it at item seven and, you know, get your clear direction on what you'd like us to do.
That's up to Deb, is that right?
Correct. If the motion remains to remove it from the agenda, then we can take a vote on that.
Right.
So up for discussion, opinions from council?
I understand, Deb, your concern that typically when an item is added to the agenda, there is a company in materials with that. Can you perhaps clarify which accompany materials you'd like to see on a future agenda for the public to be able to review and for us to be able to review? I have some in mind. I'm just wondering if you think that this, do you think it's appropriate to move forward with the discussion in the order of the agenda tonight without those materials having been provided to us and to the public?
I feel strongly that there should be, always be materials, so there may be many members of the public who wanted to speak on this item who didn't even know it was on the agenda because there's not a packet attached to it, so it didn't show up in the other part of the website. So my suggestions would be, there are a couple of letters from Westside and also from Sago. There has been other information emailed to us from Mr. Frank on this item, and we are the only ones privy to that, so it doesn't feel transparent to me. You know, I guess potentially we could just direct staff to do another workshop, but a link to the workshop that was already held as part of the packet, so the public can see that. I like a few days to process things after I've read them. I don't like to make a decision rapidly. So that's why I prefer it come off the agenda. We did, from what I understand, have a general consensus about working with the JPA for another three months, from what I understood from that previous meeting, and so I made the assumption that that was the direction we were going to head, because that's what the general consensus seemed to be. So I didn't, I was surprised this was back on our agenda at all.
Council discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, Deb, a question for you. Despite there not being any documents on this agenda item, would you be open for a discussion if we ran through it as it's been agendized tonight to talk about what a workshop would look like, or what materials that we would need when we do get to item seven, without making any decision on moving forward with the JPA?
If we're not making any decisions and we're simply going to direct staff as to what we want to see in a workshop, I could feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
So if it's not going to be an action item.
Well, that is effective, that's an action, which is to hold more workshops, but I'd love that clarification and discussion at that time.
Then I'll rescind.
Maker of the motion has rescinded the motion. Maker the second?
Rescind the second.
All right, so moving along, any other announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rule?
Unless somebody else has something. Joel, you looked at me like you had something. Okay, sorry, sorry. I didn't want to steal your moment. I would also like to remove from the agenda item eight B. I was under the understanding that we were going to give you some time to get the workings of the city going before we made any decisions on changing the current structure, and so I was again surprised that this item was on our agenda.
Second.
So motion by Councilwoman Rule, second by Councilman Espiro regarding item eight B to be removed. Any discussion by the council? Again, I would just add that I think as agendized, it gives us the opportunity to discuss that in a more structured environment than to just suggest it's removed from the agenda. So I would love to talk about it with you all and hear your feedback and share my perspective on it. So again, I think it's agendized appropriately and would love the opportunity to discuss it with you as agendized. But I defer to your will, so. Any other council discussion?
Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
I'd have to say no, because I was prepared to read that and talk about that as well.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes. Item eight B is removed from the agenda.
All right, moving along with council announcements. Any other council announcements? Moving on to staff announcements, Police Chief Kuhn, anything to brief the council on in the past week?
Test my skills with some technology here.
All right.
Hey, Corey. Don't look up to that. Don't do it. Got to do it through Zoom.
I'm not on Zoom. See, look at that. You're not going to see my full screen.
Is this something you can email to me and I'll bring it up?
No, it's not that exciting. So I'll tell you what the exciting part is, and I'll send this out. So for the, for the new council members, we were doing like weekly reports to the prior council, and which kind of gave some stats and some data and some stuff. But they got, there's some other information that come there that wasn't probably necessary for the public to view, more of like an in-house report. Now, what I'd like to see us start doing is going to like a month-to-month report, a once-a-month report, something that we could publish to the public at the beginning of the month. That way, they can kind of see our call volume, what's happening, what's going on. So I just had a couple of slides I was going to show you referencing some of the stats, but I'm just going to tell you what they are. So just to kind of give you a kind of a heads up for our call volume, the prior council kind of got to see those weekly stats and those monthly stats and our yearly stats. So we track everything the police department does, like our calls for service, our citations, our warnings. If we're out helping the public, we track all that. One of the, one of the mechanisms that we, we show off the most is like our call volume, those calls that we have for service calls. So I went back and I just did like a quick five-year review, and I'll send this out in email, so you guys can actually see it. The, the interesting thing is our last year's call volume was seven thousand six hundred eighty-five calls for service that we helped. So somebody either call in and would respond, or maybe an officer made a traffic stop and it was a DUI, and we created a call for that. In the last five years, our calls for service has went up over twenty percent. So I wanted you guys to see that graph on where we're going, just to start putting that bug in your guys' ears to think about as we go into budgeting, not only this year, but in the next five years, as you start talking about your strategic plan, where we're going, we start talking about our growth and our community, we start talking about our development, that impact as we see those residents come in and buy and build. What are we building? Low-income, affordable housing, nice developments have a specific impact on, on us and our response. And so if we look at a twenty percent increase in the last five years, as we look at our projection of our growth, where does that put us in the next five years, and what are our needs? So I just kind of wanted to kind of get that out there, so you could start seeing and just start thinking, thinking about it. I had the month of January for you. So like last month, we did almost five hundred calls for service, four hundred eighty-nine calls for service for last month. And so we'll start doing a monthly one, we'll start showing you guys the call volume of what we're responding to, more something that we can publish to the public, because I think it's important for them to see it too, and do it in a way that we're not invading anybody's privacy. So that's something that you're, you'll look forward to. The goal is to have it, and we'll get it so we can publish it starting next month.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Adam Lance, just want to give us a brief update. Our IT Security Department.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, counselors. Thanks for giving us some moment of your time. So the purpose of our staff report today is just going to give a general security update to you all and to the public. Adam and I prepared a presentation, just kind of go over some, some of the stuff that we already have implemented at the city for staff training, but I think it's also valuable information that the public and you, you guys should be aware of as well regarding some of the recent incidents that we saw in some of our neighboring cities of the city of Coeur d'Alene. We're obviously stepping up security here at the city, and it's always been a focus of ours since we arrived here at the city. So, Adam, you want to move forward with the presentation?
Yeah, we put together a small presentation just to share some of the stuff that we're seeing. So this is me and Lance from part of the security and IT department here at the city of Sandpoint. As a reminder, we do have some banners in the emails when you're receiving emails. The top one, you see less often. That's more so if you're seeing an email that's from outside of the organization, and it's something that you're not receiving frequently. So maybe it's somebody you've been communicating with, and all of a sudden they switch their email address, you'll see this pop up saying, hey, you don't communicate with this person. Massive benefit of that is it actually shows a real email address that, you know, because you can kind of hide the email address. It could look like it's from somebody else. They could say they're from somebody else. That will actually show the real email address right there. So you can go, well, that's not what it looks like. That's not what I'm seeing. And then the bottom one is one that we see from any external centers. So anybody that's outside the city of Sandpoint, you'll get that caution email or caution message that will show up saying, hey, you know, just be aware of what you're looking at, what you're clicking on, be aware of where you're at. This is one of our simulated phishing emails. So in the city of Sandpoint here, we are doing simulated phishing emails to find out who is actually clicking on things. We're trying to find and build statistics so we can help train people. It's not to be judging people or trying to figure out, you know, or not to try to bring people down, but we want to bring people up and make everybody security-conscious and aware of how much risk this puts us at. So an email like this, if somebody were to go through this, they could potentially, you know, cause or gain access into the city's environment. They can cause definitely financial damages, as well as they could cause a risk to identity. This one right here is another one that somebody had clicked on here. I obviously changed the, you know, who it went to in these emails. This was another one that was more so about identity, trying to gather information. So there's an information, information gathering one. This was also simulated, so we were really getting statistics on this one. But it looks very legitimate as well. This is actually a real phishing email. I wanted to bring this one up because this one was recent, and this was actually, as you can see, January tenth, a few days after Jeremy started his position here. And this went to Sarah, who identified as a phishing email and reported it to us. This is how much people are actually paying attention, and we are actively being spearfished, meaning that there is active, active threats against the city, and they know who people are, and they're actively putting those threats out there and trying to get this information.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Are you sure that's not Jeremy's actual private email address, mario@endgroup.com brazil?
Yes.
How can you be sure?
We would ask him. But also typically, so there's, there's a couple of things that are actually really identifying and easy to follow through with identifying a phishing email. The number one thing is, is if it's asking for information, so if there's any sense of urgency attached to it, if it's trying to change personal identification, because those types of things, right, if, if somebody was changing a bank account, Sarah would be aware of it because somebody could go and talk to her, and there's proper channels to go through that. It's not something you're going to just email Sarah and say, hey, I want to have my bank account changed. Sarah is instantly going to throw up the red flag and say, no, this is not appropriate. Because there, there has to be proper procedures and policies in place for changing that kind of information, so that, you know, obviously the paychecks don't go to the wrong people. But yeah, they got, they got names right. They have, you know, Jeremy, who's in there, all, all this information. Yeah, that's all I have there.
Yeah, just in closing for that, we did send out some recent communication to city staff, just, you know, encouraging people to stay on guard and explaining, you know, that the city staff and actually any organization's staff is the, probably the number one vulnerability when, you know, preventing the training of those staff is probably the number one vulnerability any organization experiences when they're trying to overcome or prevent a cyber incident from happening. Staff training is always going to be one of our main focuses, and so luckily for us, being a part of ICrim, we have the opportunity to be able to use some of the training materials they have and really help educate our staff, and then hopefully also city counselors, because if you guys don't know, we also host your guys' emails, so, and your guys' names are public records, so. Yeah.
Any questions for the gentleman from council?
Is this how Coeur d'Alene's system was infiltrated in their cyber attack? Was it a phishing email sent to a city email address?
So currently, there's not any information that they've made public. We imagine, I imagine they probably won't have anything until the case is completely closed and they have a full diagnostic report to generate. Currently, the only information that they've been put out to the public has been that there was a malware attack, so could have been, could have come through a phishing email, someone could have downloaded an attachment which could have produced malware onto the network. There's just no information currently at this point.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Duquette?
So when I get emails from residents, it says, I don't know them, I haven't gotten that, or whatever that message is, so, but I'm assuming that they are, when they say, dear counselor. So I open it, and if it doesn't have anything, you know, like talking about money or accounts or personal information, just clicking on it and opening that, would that bring something?
No, so opening up an email.
Okay.
Because the only way you're going to be identified is a phishing email in the first place is by opening it. If there's links in there, you're clicking on the links, if you're opening the attachments, that's where the risk really becomes involved. But, you know, just using, I would say, you know, using like, you know, when you're, when you go and open up a letter from your mailbox, and somebody was asking you to send money, you would instantly be suspicious of that. So treat it just the same as if you're receiving mail from your mailbox.
Okay.
And to add on to that as well, obviously you guys are going to receive emails from, you know, different members.
People they don't know.
Which, the, the purpose of those caution headers and banners is to just make you aware that, hey, you know, this is somebody you haven't communicated with before, but also, you know, just be cautious about the attachments you're opening, because there, there is absolutely an opportunity for people to, you know, pretend to be a citizen of the city of Sandpoint and trying to gain access to one of your assets' accounts.
So then if you get an attachment, don't open an attachment.
Just use caution, making sure.
Ask you guys if it's.
The biggest thing is like, if you're expecting the communication, somebody's like, hey, I'm going to send you over this, this attachment or this XLS file or whatever it is, then you're like, okay, well, I'm expecting that. If you're not expecting it, then you should question it.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilman Espiro?
Did you say financially the city can be in trouble? Would you mind explaining on that? Did that happen to Coeur d'Alene?
So we, like, we don't know what happened to Coeur d'Alene yet, because they haven't released that information.
Okay, not what got attacked.
Yeah, but absolutely, it could be financial impacts. If somebody were to hack any one of our accounts or get access to our accounts, there could definitely be financial impacts. Now, granted, we have done security measures at the city to prevent access, even if somebody did go through that. So if you were to accidentally go through, put your password and information in there, we still have GOIP blocking, which is basically saying, like, if you're outside of the United States, you can't sign into this account. And then we also have multi-factor authentication, which is, is just saying, in order for you to sign in, you have to know the password, but you're also going to have to put in a code. And that code is, as you guys have set up, it's something that changes every single time. So even if you put that in, they, they still shouldn't have access. And so you would just let us know, hey, I accidentally did this, and we'd, we'd have you update your password. Granted, we don't want you to get there in the first place.
Correct. And also, just to speak more about the, the question regarding financial stuff, we did have some other simulated phishing attempts to, like, similar to the one that Adam showed, where they were basically asking for bank information to be changed. Had that gone through and fully made it up the chain and Sarah not reported it and gone through into our BSNA solution and actually changed that information, then paychecks could have gone, had they been direct deposit out to the wrong bank account, which would have obviously garnered the attention of the employee, asking, you know, where is their paycheck, which would be financial loss to the city. As far as the city of Coeur d'Alene, there, obviously, we don't know exactly what happened, but even in just having a city go down, having it publicized with, you know, local and national news, there's still going to be some sort of a financial detriment to any organization that gets targeted. Obviously, we don't know if it was a ransomware attack or anything like that. And obviously, the city is in the process of getting back up and running. I believe their website came back up on the fifteenth, so they're clearly doing, making strides to make sure that their organization is more secure moving forward. But yeah, financially, there is still a huge impact for any organization that gets targeted or attacked, and actually is subject or falls victim to a malware attack.
Even the city's personal accounts.
Yeah, because I mean, anything that, I mean, if it was something that was targeted, the city's personal financial accounts during a malware attack would be host, or would not be directly linked to our network here now. Thank you.
No, and thanks, and I believe you're doing some staff training in the coming weeks or months as well.
We do also have, yeah, an all-hands-on-deck staff training that's going to be coming out for, for everybody. We're going to partition that off and have city employees, and then we'll do police fire separately, because there's some scheduling. But yeah, we do have about a twenty to thirty-minute staff training we're going to do, and I believe that we are tentatively scheduling that for March fourteenth for City Hall, and then police will be, I believe, in April, so.
Excellent. Well, keep up the good work, and thanks for keeping us safe.
All right, thank you.
Sarah, if you don't have anything, I don't think, and Cheryl, you're good. Isis and Chief, anyone else want to come give a brief in? Great. Oh, Heather, thank you, sorry. I was thinking you're, oh, Brandon's up front here.
Perfect.
Heather Upden.
Wonderful to be here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. So Heather Upden, I'm the Arts Historic Preservation Officer. My duty is here at the city. I oversee historic preservation, public art, and I'm the cultural liaison. So I just wanted to give you some quick updates on what's going on with the arts, culture, and historic preservation. We're really excited. Maeve brought an opportunity forward for a art call, and it's going to be a pretty quick turnaround, but the Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Commission has approved this, and right now I'm working with city staff to get this call up and running. But Traverse Park has a piece of equipment called a week around, and it's a really neat accessible merry-go-round, and you can see that in the photo. And there's four panels, and that's four opportunities for artwork, local artwork. So the commission got together Arts Culture and Historic Preservation, and we thought about Traverse Park and some of the really great opportunities and themes, like Patrick McManus being a local author, and so we thought highlighting local art illustrators would be a really great opportunity. And so we're looking at it as two ways. It's illustrators that are here in the community and illustrators that are featured in local books. And so we're really looking forward to get that call out, and I'll have a date coming up, and it's going to be shared on all of the city's local sites, so that's Facebook, Engage, and our website. And we'll also be looking to partner with some other nonprofits to get the word out, too. So I'm really excited to share this with you all, and down below is a piece by Sandy Gill of artwork that she's done. She's an illustrator, and it wrapped beautifully on a utility box, so it's a kind of a similar process. There, so we were able to get a stipend for the artist, so it would be two hundred and fifty dollars per panel, and the artist would submit a digital resolution, and we'll have that RFP coming out hopefully within the week. So love those great opportunities to feature our local artists. Another fun thing that's happening on Monday, the twenty-six, at eight o'clock in the morning with KRFY, I will be hosting a new radio show with Hannah Combs, the Executive Director of the museum. It will be called the Community Character Hour, and it's our opportunity to, through the lens of history, talk about really cool things that make Sandpoint unique and special, which I think of as the Sandpoint character. And our first series that we're going to be launching will be talking about the history of comprehensive planning, and it's, it's pretty exciting, trust me. So you'll want to tune in. And, and then that will tie back to being, to share all of the cool planning that we're doing here and the importance of a comp plan, too. So really looking forward to that. It's going to be just a fun kind of pop event. So yeah, I hope you guys can all have that chance to tune in. And then Historics.
Heather, can you just repeat the date again?
Oh, absolutely. Monday, the twenty-sixth, eight o'clock in the morning.
Heather, is that a weekly? And Heather, is that a weekly podcast or would that be monthly or?
I know it's monthly, um, but there may be opportunities depending on how popular it is to.
And I assume, like, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
You go for it.
Um, as with all KRFY shows, that will probably be posted to their website so that listeners can find it there later that day or the next day. So if you don't, it just wanted the public know, if you don't catch it live, you can go find it on the krfy.org.
Yes. I really appreciate you bringing that up and.
That's where I'll be listening to it, I'm sure.
Very good. You can have it on continual real, right? And these are fun anecdotal facts that you can always say, like these, this is the juicy fun stuff that you can share during cocktail hour. The eight o'clock will not be the cocktail hour though. Just to clarify.
Eight o'clock is my time to listen to the radio.
Yay, good, 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 good. Um, so, uh, Historic Preservation, um, we have a historic work team from the commission, um, that meets every Monday and they work a lot on education advocacy. And right now they're working on some really cool updates to the walking tour brochure, which I'll look forward to sharing with you. Um, but that, there's just always really cool work that's being done in that arena. Um, and then additionally, I've had the opportunity to start working on committees and commissions, which has been really fun. We're really excited to get those citizen advisory, um, committees and commissions up and running and, um, Mr. Mayor, you shared the opening and the last council meeting about that happening. And so those, um, application opportunities are live. We've had some great applications coming in already, which is really exciting. And, um, just as a reminder, it's for ADA, um, committee, uh, sustainability committee, ped bike committee. And then we have the Parks and Rec Commission and then, um, Urban Forestry Commission will be coming as well. Um, so right now I'm working with city staff on, uh, taking a look at those ordinances and making sure that they're updated to what's happening right now and with the current organization and so forth. And we're really looking forward to all of your awesome participation with these committees and commissions as well. And so, um, yeah, that's going to be hopefully coming, coming around. So thank you so much for letting me share tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Counselwoman.
I'm wondering, um, people have asked, will there be an opening on each committee for somebody not in the city? I was told at one time that you, we would take one out of the city. Is that going to be for all the committees as well?
That's a fantastic question. Each one is going to be a little different. And so right now, if you go on sandpointidaho.gov, you can, um, look under news and then you go onto that page and there will be the chapter codes. And then you can look under each section code and it will share there. Um, but, um, I know some of them have been adjusted. I know historic, uh, Arts Culture and Historic Preservation Commission kind of ran into that. Um, because that one requires, according to, to the state of Idaho, certain, um, standards in terms of historic preservation knowledge. And it was really kind of a difficult, uh, challenging thing to be able to get all that expertise we needed. So I really appreciate you bringing that up and we're definitely looking into that.
Okay. And then I have one more question. How long, people have asked, how long will they, will you be accepting applications? Is there a deadline?
Another great question. Um, we haven't really established that yet. It's really kind of depending on, um, how many applications, qualified applications come in that can, um, fill the committees.
And, and Councilwoman Duquette, I'll just, um, add to that, that the next step in the process is once, uh, Heather completes her review of the various, uh, chapters and provisions, that'll come to the council for your discussion of things like out of city or in city residents. Once those get tweaked and adopted, uh, we'll be ready to populate them. And we've already been thinking of each of you and, um, committees that, uh, you would be well aligned with. So, um, any other questions for Heather?
Absolutely.
Thanks so much, Heather.
Thank you so much.
And last, but far from least, Brandon. It's our city civil engineer.
Good evening. The first one I have is tomorrow, um, we have a couple of, um, open houses for the Pine and Fifth Signal Project. Uh, one of them's from twelve to two, other ones from five to seven. So, um, invite all members of the public to come out to either one of those. Um, and also if you miss those, we're, you can always come into city hall to talk about this project with staff or any of our other projects as well. Uh, and then second, if I can share my screen here. I missed it already. There it is. Okay. So I wanted to give, um, some advanced notice of a potential striping project on the rest of North Division, um, that we're considering. Uh, this is very preliminary and I don't have all the details figured out yet, but, um, and this will be on, um, uh, multiple future agenda items. Um, but basically the project that we did, um, in front of the high school on division was just a couple of blocks and the original intent of them plan was to, um, eventually extend it all the way up to Baldi, the whole length of division in phases. Obviously we can't do it all at once. It's a very expensive project, but our, our thought was maybe we can do some, just some striping right now, temporarily until all those projects get finished. Um, so, uh, right now there's sections of division that where there's not a turn lane, where the travel lanes are way wider than they need to be, sixteen, seventeen feet. Um, I think it causes people to speed anecdotally. I don't really have any data for that. Um, but the thought is to reduce those, um, the lane widths for travel lane to twelve feet, to a standard twelve foot lane all the way up division with striping. And this is kind of a little exhibit that I put together. Um, what it would be is, so north is facing to the right, but, um, you, you know, you'd have a twelve foot lane on either side centered on the existing center line and, uh, two to three foot buffer, striped white buffer and then maybe some green paint on the bike lane with some bike symbols. Um, and then when we get to the sections where we have turn lanes at the intersections, like at Pine Street and Cedar and some of those, we're not going to change any of that turn lane striping. We would just kind of transition this into that striping because we don't have the room at those locations. So this would only be in those straight stretches um, between the striping. So this accomplishes, um, a couple of things. I think, uh, snow storage, it kind of gives us a defined spot to store snow in the winter that isn't on the sidewalk. Um, so we can start enforcing, uh, the adjacent residents clearing the snow on both sides of the street. Um, I think it also, as I kind of touched on before, provides a little bit of traffic calming because there won't be just a straight shot down division. You'd kind of have to transition in and out between those turn lanes. So I think it would probably provide some traffic calming. Um, and also the bike lanes right now are a little bit smaller than what a standard would be. So this would bring them up to recognize standard width of five feet from the lip of the curb. So, um, that'll be forthcoming. I'll, I don't have cost information yet. It's possible that we reduce that green paint can get expensive. So it's possible that we won't be able to afford to just slap this green paint the whole way. So a, as we start looking at costs, we might consider reducing the amount. This is generally what we're looking at.
Thanks, Brandon.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman, um, Welker.
Uh, comment and, um, I'd like to thank you for working on this project. Um, I'd also like to thank members of the public who provided inspiration for this prob, project, uh, particularly the LPUSD Facilities Director, Matt Deal, who I, I think pretty much put this on our radar and, uh, our previous city administrator listened in several meetings and, um, I think also prioritized this. So this is a fantastic project. And as far as the green paint goes, I think that is a really important part of this. And I'm certain that there are grants out there that could help pay for that. In fact, I have several leads for potential grants for bicycle specific, uh, transportation infrastructure that might help us get some extra funds to, to do the, the, the painting of those bike lanes. So, um, and, and, and just to emphasize the, um, winter implications for this, we're, we're talking about thi- this entire stretch, the only, um, place where it's really possible right now for businesses to clear their sidewalks is along, um, and, uh, what is it? Lake? I'm forgetting exactly where we did the sidewalk project to last year. To where, to Superior, where we've already implemented the, um, lateral shift in front of the middle and high school and provided space for the, the plow to store snow that's not on the sidewalks. So we're talking about safe routes to schools in the winter and kids are currently unable to walk on sidewalks along most of division because of the way we plow snow right onto the sidewalks, making it impossible for property owners to, to, to shovel those. And I agree that we don't need those sixteen foot wide drivelanes. Traffic calming, great outcome, better access for cyclists in the summer and safe routes to school for kids in the winter who are currently literally forced to walk on the shoulder of the, the road there. So, thank you. Good work.
Yeah. And I'd just also add, uh, I forgot to mention that the, um, this bike, uh, lane and buffer combo would eventually become, when we build the whole thing out with curb, it would become a planter strip with trees eventually. So this would kind of get people used to that full build out now.
Thanks. Any other questions for Brandon? Thanks so much, Brandon.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, um, I think that's all the staff members. Uh, I have a couple of announcements, uh. First and foremost, um, I spent, uh, the last two weeks meeting with all of our engineering consultants who have worked on the wastewater plant as well as with former utilities director Greg Lanning. Tomorrow I'll be meeting with Dan McCracken. He's the Northern DEQ, uh, uh, director up here in Coeur d'Alene. Um, Holly and Brandon will be joining via Zoom and just discussing a plan for the wastewater plant. Um, I'm now at a point where I have a full, uh, background of our historical efforts and, uh, the goal here is to work with DEQ and our consultants and the council to put together a, um, uh, a very, uh, achievable plan to start making some improvements at that plant. So, um, uh, it's, it's fun to learn about, uh, the options. It's also a bit, um, disturbing to learn about, um, the, the, the state of the plant and the challenges that we face there. So, um, we'll be coming back in a couple of weeks with a, um, uh, RFP to ask for consultants, engineers to give us uh, a pro-cons cost benefit list of either going with a full turnkey plant replacement or an incremental and integrated plant, uh, replacement. And then we'll have to work with them to, uh, look at both, uh, federal and state funding as well as, uh, probable, uh, bond issuance to, to cover some of those repairs. So uh, this is number one on my list after the comp plan and, uh, really excited to start rolling on it. Um, the other items I wanted to bring up, uh, we had, uh, two great interviews for the Community Planning Development Director. We've got two more, uh, throughout this week. So, um, exciting to have some really qualified, uh, candidates for that position. Um, if you've never been to Pisney, I had the opportunity yesterday to tour and, uh, that's Panhandle Special Needs up on Boer. What a, uh, amazing group of people. And to have a community resource like that here is something that I was blown away by. Um, and we're just lucky to have them. So I'd say if you want to, uh, have some extra time, want to volunteer, they need more help. Their demand is greater than their capacity. Um, and they are some inspirational people there. Um, winter carnival, uh, is kicking off this weekend. So enjoy the canine keg pool. If they bring some snow down. I don't know what they're doing, but, uh, if you do participate, be safe and, uh, have fun. Um, we did, uh, send out a termination, early termination of the odd side parking today. So, um, just to let you know, uh, the foreseeable future until March doesn't look like much snow accumulation. So uh, decided to relieve the public of that constraint and certainly appreciate their compliance all year. It really helped Chet and the streets team uh, during those snow events. Um, having said that, I'm not calling an end to winter, Councilman Welker. So I hope you get some more turns in and, and others who enjoy that. Uh, and then finally, um, we've got a, uh, scheduled date of March sixth for the council training workshop as well as to go over the strategic priorities. Um, look forward to seeing you all there. Um, so with that, uh, we will move on unless there's any other announcements from council.
Minister Mayor, can I just ask a question?
Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman. Uh, we'll start in the end. Councilwoman, roll.
Um, so we are a definite for March sixth then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Duquette.
Where can I find out, um, the description of the Community Planning and Development Director? That was something that we're going to talk about and the Public Works Director, just for my information.
Well, that got removed, but you can go to the, the job, uh, openings page on City Sandpoint employment and you can see the, uh, job description right there. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on, this will, um, we'll go on to the public forum. Next on the agenda is the public porn forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or other topics not included on the agenda. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete in a comment signup form and hand it to the staff. Um, if you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have the opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of the regular agenda. Um, I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted in the chambers at the entrance door. In summary, I'd ask that those participating in our meetings this evening, please be pleasant and respectful. Not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be boisterous or disruptive. No calling out, clapping, holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning related matters outside of an official public hearing. Public comments need to be kept, um, kept to comments only. Please no questions or debate. You're always welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns in the public forum and also during other public comment opportunities during the meeting. People will have, uh, up to three minutes to speak. When did you turn? Please state your name and whether you reside within the city limits. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Janine Shepherd.
Good evening, Janine.
Hi, Janine Shepherd, Bonner County. Just wanted to pray for you before the meeting tonight. If you'd, I'd love it if you'd join me. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight in Thanksgiving for all that you have done. We recognize your hand in our lives and the ways that you help us each day. We lift up the mayor and council members, asking that you help lead and guide them as they work through the agenda tonight. Bring clarity and vision to them, helping them to discern your will for each situation. We love our city, Lord, and we know that you do too. Bring about the best result for the work the mayor and council members do tonight. Help them to glorify you as they work through each item. Help their motivation be one of listening to you and doing as you ask. We want to be pleasing to you in all we do, setting aside our own agenda to follow you. Lord, for each person in the room, I pray that you touch their lives, bring healing and wholeness to every part of them. I ask that you meet them wherever they are struggling with your amazing comfort and peace. Show yourself as real to them and help them to hear your voice. I know you want all to come to know you and that you love each one. Lead them to you in their trouble, sickness and despair. You are a good father and I praise you for what you will do here. Bless our city, Lord, and bless this meeting. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all who have indicated an interest to speak during public forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That will conclude the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. Uh, we'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is two million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred sixty thousand and fifteen cents for regular payables. Does council have any questions or are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I, I did have a question.
That's one we get.
Just from my information, the additional cost for the delay for the, um, generator was like $4,000 increase. And it said because of delay for getting parts or I wasn't, I'm not sure why did it cost more to wait a year for?
Um, we have Cheryl there, so maybe Cheryl can answer that.
Three of that. I was just curious.
So what happened is the ATS switch, the Automatic Transfer Switch was delayed a year and a half. So there was additional mechanical engineering that had to be done. Um, because there was an attempt to find the switch somewhere else that supposedly was going to be available. Um, and ultimately that didn't work out either. They ended up delayed as well. It was, um, a year and a half nightmare trying to get that switch. So the architect who was also acting kind of as the. So the architect who was also acting kind of as the project manager, um, with the contractor, he put in a lot of extra time.
Okay, so it was personnel time?
Yep. It was his time that he had to put in because of the delay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Cheryl.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Moved, second.
Moved by Dick, second by Welker. Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrel?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to item seven, under old business this evening, council will consider the sample. Participation in the joint powers agreement for the coordinated and cooperative provision of fire service, city standpoint, Segal Fire District and Westside Fire District. Bond council's discussion on January seventeenth and the January thirty-first joint session with the joint powers, uh, parties, uh, and the firefighters union. This issue is now back on the agenda for consideration and additional discussion. It's marked in an action item in the event. Council likes to make, take action on the item. Um, you know, uh, again, speaking for myself, um, I didn't feel, uh, like I should make a unilateral decision on where this process goes, uh, uh, after our last meeting. So I wanted to bring it to the council for a discussion and to defer to your, uh, priorities and wishes. Uh, what we heard at the beginning of the meeting is that there seemed to be some desire for, uh, additional workshops. Um, and I guess at this point I'd like to, uh, open this up for discussion on, um, what specifically you would like included in those workshops, uh, and any other information you want to provide to guide myself and staff.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll start off. Uh, some information that we didn't have after the first workshop. Uh, I know a little bit has come in. Uh, I'd like to get some more information from both Segal and Westside, a little more detail in terms of their levies. Um, what the, I, we, I understand we have a dollar amount. Uh, we have some indication on how many firefighters that would potentially hire. Uh, I'd like to drill down into those numbers a bit. And see what that would cover, um, and, and how that's going to be broken down a little bit more and understand where that, that helps their current budgets. Um, secondly, where there's been some, um, communication that's been sent over from Mr. Frank, uh, on the difference between an association and an authority. Uh, we did have some discussion on that, uh, during the first workshop. I'd like to drill down on that. And I think you had actually brought up some, uh, information that has come to light from, uh, Mr. Sauer. If you wouldn't mind discussing that.
Sure. Sure. And, um, uh, our financial director, uh, Sarah Linz, uh, helped research this. Uh, I don't recall the house bill, but there were some recent changes in state statute that specifically deal with this issue. And paraphrasing, uh, what that statute says is if a entity, uh, becomes part of a fire authority or a fire district, um, like Sandpoint, uh, the, uh, funding of our fire department the year prior is then removed from our, uh, general fund or budget authority. So, uh, it appears it's an attempt to prevent double dipping. Um, practically, practically, uh, what it would mean is that if we became a fire authority or a fire district, uh, we would have to, uh, forego our previous year's, uh, general fund budget for the fire department.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to clarify, I might need to call on Sarah here, but I think it's not a fire authority or a fire district. It's if voters, uh, voted to annex for Sandpoint to be so and such, uh, annexed into a taxing district. The, the fire authority, as far as I understand, would be quite different because we wouldn't need voters to approve a fire authority. The city council could agree to become part of an authority and then hand our already collected tax revenues for fire service over to a third party to manage the operations of fire services within the city. External to Sandpoint, city council managing that. So in that case, I believe, we, we, we wouldn't be removing that from our budget. Rather, we'd be taking it and giving it to the authority. If we were part of a taxing district, we're sandpoint taxpayers. We're, we're paying taxes for fire service. We couldn't then just say, oh, you're one and a half million dollars that we were using for fire service. We're now going to roll into the general fund and
Precisely.
pad of the projects. Is that correct?
Precisely. Okay. Um, you've stated it very well, uh, Councilman Welker. And that's my understanding of, uh, Sarah's nodding her head. So, um.
No, so it is. So to clarify, that piece of state statute in question would be, um, in the case that in the future voters agreed to join a new fire district. And then, then in that case, we would no longer be in a JPA. We'd be part of a, a broader, a taxing district.
Correct.
Right. There, there, there's also the question of the fire authority, which Mr. Frank has referenced, and I think Justin was talking about, which is kind of an intermediate step between our joint powers agreement and being in a, in a new taxing district. And then that is where we would form a new authority that would oversee Sandpoint taxpayer dollars for the administration of fire services.
Precisely.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. These are, again, I think this all just points to the fact that maybe there's more information and clarification needed for us to make this decision.
Would, would you prefer that, uh, those breakouts and descriptions are provided in this workshop, just for clarification?
Absolutely. Yeah. What are the different stages, you know, from going at our own Sandpoint City Fire to JPA to authority to fire district? And I think the public needs to be aware of all these options as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Rule?
Um, if I may, um, also if this in the future, after having a workshop, if that's the, the route we're going to direct staff to, um, that I would request any information that we're getting is not just emailed to, um, council members or from anybody in fire and also give us a reasonable amount of time. So it can be posted to the website. I think materials need to be turned in Fridays for the Wednesday council meeting. That's not only for council, but it's, I think, to, for things to be very transparent to the public, to give them a weekend to read through things, see if they want to be involved or just understand what's going on. Um, as I said earlier, for me, um, I need to read through those things. If you email me something at nine AM on Wednesday, guess what? I work all day. And I'm not reading it before I come to council because it, that's not how it works out in my world. So, um, uh, that's what I would ask of everybody who's involved in this, um, all the districts. And then my other request would be that, um, I don't know in the future which way council is going to decide to stay in this or, you know, get involved in an authority or, or stay in the JPA or whatever that may be. But, um, uh, whichever direction that goes, I know that, um, um, all twenty-five current employees of the fire department, if council were to decide to, um, remove itself from the Selkirk, um, uh, fire, that, um, what do we do with those twenty-five employees? So I think that legal and HR, um, may need to have information for us on, um, how we go about doing that so that we don't get ourselves into a difficult place with litigation. So that would be, um, important to me to have that information, um, very clear to us because we're making big decisions up here and I don't want to make a decision, make, whoa, make a decision and then realize I, you know, screwed up because I didn't have all the moving parts, um, in the right place.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule. Uh, we can get all that information.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Spiro.
Uh, Deb, just to clarify, uh, what you're saying is, because all JPA members, as far as I know, are city standpoint resident or city standpoint employees. So if we did dissolve the JPA, who would go where?
We're going to have twenty-five employees and those other, um, districts are going to have no employees. So how, how do we legally get, get through those pieces? And, um, I just think we, I don't know which way council is going to go, but I'm saying we need to have all the pieces of this puzzle so that we can make an educated decision and make sure that we're not getting ourselves into, um, a financial, um, situation that we cannot manage or we put burden on the taxpayers. Not realizing that we made a decision that would do that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, say we were to stay or dissolve, do you have a task team, like a team specifically in your leadership, who does what and figuring out what for the JPA to stay in or stay out?
Um, in, in terms of coordinating this information?
Yeah. And, and also moving forward, say the council decides to dissolve, who's in charge of what?
Yeah. Well, I think, um, right now, the task team is myself, um, and, uh, our finance director and our HR director and our legal team. So that's the team. Um, but I, uh, I think it's super reasonable, uh, to prepare the council with all that information. So we all know what we're likely looking at, uh, depending on what direction we move.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, I'm sorry, a house bill statute. Do you have a number for that? Something I could read?
Do you happen to have that offhand? Three eight nine.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and again, it would be great if we are going to have another workshop that these bills and all that are included in the packet. So I don't have to fish around in ten different places for the information I want to be prepared for a meeting.
Um, uh, certainly. And I would just, uh, mention to the council that, uh, if there's any additional information that is reasonably, uh, attainable, um, short of full studies and things like that, uh, please let me know and we'll, uh, put together a agenda and, uh, identify a time to meet. Um, is there, what, Councilman?
Is there a consensus on another workshop or just having the information given to the public and us and coming for an action item?
That's what I'm a little unclear on as well. It, it, we've done a two, two and a half hour workshop with the commissioners from the other districts, with the union represented with several firefighters. I, I don't hear from Deb the desire for information that would be uncovered in another workshop like that. I hear from Deb information around the consequences of our decision up here, um, from, from legal, from HR, from finance. So I'd, I would ask Councilman Dick, what do you see this as being? What you envision in another workshop is just more information from city staff around and legal? Or do you envision a workshop that includes these other districts again? Is this a, what's the, what's your desired outcome from a second workshop?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your question as well, too. I, I would like to see the, uh, rest of the commissioners there. I'd like to see Segal and Westside. And I would be remiss in ask and not asking, but Northside was not able to speak, but that particular day, I believe there was some conversation of a mutual aid agreement between Selkirk and Northside. Uh, I'd like to see if we could get a representative from them as well. Uh, and then ultimately I'd like to, if, these are kind of the questions, I think everything that we've been ferreting out this evening, besides what actually comes up at the workshop. Um, I think there would potentially be enough information out there, um, after we hear from the public as well, that we could come back and this would be an agenda item, uh, on one of our upcoming council meetings.
And Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Justin that another workshop would be appropriate. I think it was asked for by the fire personnel and by the other districts as well. Seems to be a good idea to me.
So another clarifying question, the, the, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the, the format of the last workshop was kind of a round table. We started with the union, then we went to Westside, then we went to Segal and we heard from all the commissioners and it was, I, I viewed it as, here are the reasons Sandpoint should stay in JPA. Here's why it's good for you and why it's, it's a good thing for Bonner County. I don't know if we need to hear all that again. I'm still wondering what, what do we expect to hear from these other stakeholders? I mean, I, I also.
That was my point as to that question.
By inviting Northside, okay, are we, is the purpose of this to explore expanding JPA to include Northside? Is that, is that your?
Mr. Mayor, if I would, that, that would be mine. If we're already taking a look at a mutual aid and what we heard was if, if we're all employees and one station or another is missing employees due to one reason and we're backfilling that, wouldn't it behoove us to add more to those employees as well? Right? And, and part of the JPA, if you look at our surrounding area, we are surrounded with trees. Fire is, uh, has the capacity to impact every single industry in our community. Um, I think it would behoove us to take a look at what Northside, if Northside even wants to be involved with this as well, too. I think when we get some more information about the levies, because that was a big thing that we were missing this last go around as well. We told, we were told that Segal and Westside were going to go after levies. We didn't know how much. We don't know what the marketing looks like. Um, and we don't know what that full involvement looks like. I'm hoping to get answers to those questions. Um, I'd also like to see back, we understand that the capacity of our HR and our admin specific to Sandpoint is being taken up, uh, with concerns or with issues related strictly to the JPA. Um, if we've got some kind of a dollar amount or what, a, a potential employee of the JPA that would handle HR and admin. Um, if we've got any ideas on the board for that and maybe the potential to discuss with the other districts, Westside and Segal. Um, and with that, and then again, this authority and association discussion, because that's been brought up a lot, uh, specifically this week. Um, and I don't know how well the public understand. I don't understand it very well other than our discussion tonight. So that would be interesting to hear. Hear the public comment, and I think there's enough information to go from there, uh, to make a decision.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Councilwoman Rule?
I think that, um, I appreciated the workshop we had, but I would prefer, um, a format in which maybe this gets agendized. Um, let's say six weeks from now or within that three month timeframe that was, um, discussed in the workshop. And that these other districts, um, uh, come and present, um, their arguments and their information in a very detailed format. And it, um, be in a packet for the public to read and peruse. Um, I would rather see all these questions um, in written format. Um, I, I think we know what the questions are so that we can think it through. Um, if the public wants to come forward and comment on that, um, I just feel like that would work better for me than having another workshop. I think we got through what we needed to in the workshop. And then I'd like to see something that's more of a formal presentation on what what these other districts are going to do, if that makes sense. Did that make sense, counselors? Okay.
So Councilwoman Rule, what I'm hearing at least from you is, um, more refined, limited scope where specific questions and a presentation comes from Segal, Westside, uh, we have our packet as well, answering the questions and presenting the information. Uh, and potentially Northside, but then for you to digest that.
I'd like to see the packets go out on Friday like they do for council and we can digest whatever is in that. And then they can come forward and make presentations on those packet materials.
At a workshop?
No, in, in council, at a format.
Uh, at, at, agendized at the same time?
At council with PowerPoint presentations and, and all of those questions thoroughly answered. And if we have more questions at that point, they can be, um, asked and commented upon. And, um, I, I guess what I'm asking for is some real effort and work put in on the sides of the other, um, uh, parts of the JPA and, um, uh, you know, if fire themselves as employees wants to make a presentation, I would be absolutely okay with that. If they feel like there's holes that need to be filled in that weren't previously, um, on different authorities or where they'd like to see things go. It's a more effective way for me to make a decision to be able to read through all that ahead of time, as I've said multiple times.
And one clarifying, uh, question, Councilwoman Rule, and you're saying a presentation as an agendized item with information preemptively or, um, sent out Friday. Uh, and at that same meeting, an action item where you might be prepared to make a decision that night or that would be a subsequent, uh, meeting?
Um, I think we could probably have it in an act, as an action item. And if we decided to not vote on it, we could push it at that point. If we felt like there were some things that weren't addressed, I'd also like a presentation from legal relative to, um, the questions I just put out there before.
Great. Uh, council, any questions regarding that? Seems pretty clear. Um, anyone object to that sort of format and structure?
I, I think trying.
Duquette?
Trying to listen to all of that in an evening presented in that format for me and have to decide that evening. I would not feel good about that. But.
If I may?
That's me.
Councilwoman Rule?
My point was that it would come out just like our council materials come out. And so those people would have. My point was that it would come out just like our council materials come out, and so those people would have to be prepared on Friday to submit all the material, and then they would just kind of regurgitate what we've already read through as happens like this. So you'd have from that Friday through that Wednesday to really process the information, which I process slow. And then they're gonna read it back to you again, so if you have more questions at that point, or you could be ready with your questions. But they could present it, and then the public would have an opportunity to hear it in that format or to watch a Zoom meeting, because they might not have the time to read through things like we do.
And and if they did not have time to read through things like that, it just seems to me if they were at a meeting, a workshop like we had, or at um able to listen to a workshop, they could understand that easier, too, is what I was thinking, instead of just having to read the information on their own.
And council members, I'd add that this item was agendized tonight for action, and I see one, two, three, four, five non-fire related members of the public here. So um I'm not sure how much feedback we're gonna get from the public on this one, but uh I'm hopeful that you get enough to make a decision.
And and then I have one more question. You said the public votes?
No, so the the formation of a new taxing district would require yeah, and that's, that's the, from what I've heard, that's kind of the ultimate desired outcome from several stakeholders in this conversation. We're several steps away from that in our current arrangement.
And I'm several steps behind everybody on the JPA anyway, just the timing, so to me, that's presenting a problem, but I'll do whatever everybody decides, I guess.
Councilwoman Spiro?
Uh I appreciate Deb's Councilwoman Rule's comments, and I I second that.
You support that action action? Uh Councilman Schreiber, any comments? I don't want to leave you out in Zoom land.
Thank you. Um I I think that there is definitely some weight to the idea that um that big roundtable discussion um didn't necessarily, wasn't, wasn't the best way to come up with actionable items. Um I think it was definitely productive, but uh I like uh Councilor Rule's idea of each district coming up with a um uh proposal, let's say, and I I think that maybe Sandpoint should come up with their own as well and have some very specific points that we we would need to fill if we wanted to stay in, or like uh Counselor Walker said, let's, let's explore those additional options of expanding and maybe bringing in Westside. We should talk to Westside and see if they're even interested and and if they did want to, what would it take for them to get involved? So there is a lot of moving pieces here, and I I I I definitely understand the concern that the roundtable workshop isn't necessarily the best way to approach it. Um I'm a little concerned that, you know, echoing what Counselor Duquette just said, that it's a lot to digest in a single council meeting. Um you know, there is the additional um method of the JPA commission meetings. Um you know, if we wanted to work as a council to come up with a proposal and a list of items that we really need to address before we sign on to another year or, you know, have a plan for how we want to move forward with this, I'd be happy to bring that to the other commissioners in the JPA and uh discuss that with them so that it's a little bit smaller of a group that's not so unwieldy. You know, ultimately, I think I'm open to to either the workshop or the agenda item method of 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 approaching this. So I'm I'm sort of open when it comes to consensus.
Thanks, Councilman Schreiber.
Give him a question? I I wonder when the next um commission meeting is.
It's right now scheduled for D nine.
Twenty nine.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Spiro?
Um is this something that we're voting on what if we want a workshop or a council meeting, or is this something that you're gonna decide?
Um
I think we're ready to.
I I think uh at this point, um we have a couple options. Obviously, you could act on the 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 main item, which doesn't seem
That's right.
Um so uh beyond that, I think uh I would like clarification on, and I feel like we're almost there. Um uh direction on the format. So what I'm hearing, uh and I'd be um open to a motion on it, is that staff contacts, works with the other two districts, um they put a concise I'll call it a pitch together with alternatives and options based on the concerns they've heard so far. Uh they put that in writing with details about levies, what it's gonna fund, man hours. Um process for securing that levy, and we include that in a packet. Um myself and staff do a similar um setup, uh pros and cons. Um trying to be neutral of the city's position, and then it it becomes agendized at a future council meeting with those those um districts making a presentation, inviting Northside to do the same, and seeing where it goes from there.
So I think I could make a motion right now. My motion is to table.
Councilman Walker? One suggestion. I would suggest this probably be a special meeting and not try to just include it in one of your next council meetings so that you're only focused on this on that night.
Thank you.
That would make it easier, I think, as well. Otherwise, it's a lot to do in an evening.
We we have had six hour council meetings in this chamber before. Um so I would, I would make a motion to table item seven A for a future special council meeting um with an agendized item focusing specifically on the Sandpoint's future in the JPA um with this special direction to Sandpoint City Staff and the mayor to provide a a thorough, what we would call a staff report on Friday before this meeting or an appropriate timeframe before this meeting, including all the materials that you just outlined, Mr. Mayor.
So. Uh moved by Councilman Welkers, or second? Second by Councilman Dick.
And I would. Well, I'd like to amend to um a certain date so that these fire districts know if that's gonna be four weeks or six weeks or eight weeks, because we did discuss three months down the road to May. Um Fonda's face is is a little concerned, so I'm guessing six weeks might be
Only concerned was trying to select a particular date tonight, maybe just a timeframe.
Um should I say within two months?
It will have to be because um but well, potentially may have to be because depending on how you read the joint powers agreement and its interpretation, we may need to give notice uh some time around the first of May.
I was thinking in April. Could we just say in April? To amend to say in April and then my, the other piece of my amendment would be that my thought process would we would, Sandpoint would do a presentation and each of the districts would do their presentations. Is that what you were?
I I would, I would say any public comment is welcome to be submitted before the packet is posted on Friday. But then during the evening, it would be held like any other council meeting where members of the public could come speak for three minutes.
Uh that's maybe a presentation from.
I was thinking the other districts would want to have uh their own small presentations in addition to ours. Are you thinking staff would ahead of time work with those other districts and then it would all be combined in the same report?
You're describing what I felt like we already did, which is another workshop. I was just, I was thinking of this as a a decision, an action item
Okay, I understand.
With a, with a public comment, period.
Agreed.
Related to that.
Agreed. So all the information would be collected and 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 reported by our staff, and then public comment would happen. Yes, I agree with that. Okay, so I would just amend so that we would have this special meeting sometime in April.
I think uh I hear you. I'm not sure if amendments needed, but that works unless there's objection.
And can I ask one more question?
Uh Councilwoman?
Would you still be required to make a decision the evening? All of that is gathered and presented. Three minutes as a public speaker isn't much. I have a lot of experience with that.
Uh Councilwoman Duquette, uh again, depending on how you interpret the um meaning of the joint powers agreement and some words in it, it's my understanding that our only hard deadline would be um potentially May first.
Okay.
Um I'd have to visit with legal.
If no decision were made, then we are I guess by default, well, I guess we would have to make a decision to renew our participation in joint project, so I I would think that by April, we'd
I'm, I'm okay with that, that time, yeah, for sure, that timeline. Okay, you go ahead and make a position.
There's a motion and a second. Uh any more discussion? I have clear direction. We'll call vote.
Mr. Mayor? Um there were some members of the public who signed up to speak on this item this evening. Um
Oh, sorry, thank you.
I don't know if you wanted to put off that uh those comments for that time, or if you would like to take those this evening.
Um I, you know, I I'm all for public uh transparency and engagement, so I um I do apologize for jumping over that. I got so excited about the direction. At this time, um is there any public comment on this item, and I'm clerk?
One moment. Clint Frank?
Hello, Mr. Frank.
Mayor, uh Councilman, hey, women. Um yeah, I basically don't have any prepared comments. I just saw it as an action item. I was surprised he isn't an action item. And I wanted to just make sure we actually could establish a workshop so we can discuss some of these large decisions that we're making about emergency services by people actually do them. Um so I'm encouraging a workshop. Um uh it sounds like a special meeting is uh what you just discussed for the last twenty minutes. I think at some point you do need to make a decision, but I think in order to make an informed decision, a couple additional workshops, whether they're smaller, uh would probably be best suited. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Frank.
Merlin Glass?
Well, Mr. Glass. Councillors, uh thank you, Mayor, uh for the opportunity to speak. Uh my name is Merlin Glass. I live in Dover. And so that puts me smack in the dab of the middle of Westside Fire District. Um what I wanted to talk about is in um support of the JPA. Uh the JPA document is primarily administrative document, of which you guys are administrators. It has uh very little function uh operationally. Um we talked, you you talked about a workshop. That would be a great opportunity for you to learn what is is required at the time of an emergency of what the fire department actually does. Then you can balance out whether or not it's cost effective or not. Um all the issues that were brought up in the last workshop really boiled down to one question, and that's staffing. Uh whether or not you're talking about uh sliders going between stations and whether or not you got somebody in Sagal coming to Sandpoint or vice versa. I can tell you that that happens everywhere, okay? You gotta balance a ship. It's like canoe. You can't have everybody on one side. Okay, so you gotta move people over to support the, support the program. Um the other thing that was brought up was about retention. Uh that's a big problem, and that boils down to staffing, too. Westside's operating with one firefighter, Sandpoint's got three, Sagal's got two, maybe another two in the, in the Carywood Station. Eight people on a daily basis is not enough to to support what our community is and how it's growing. We're no different than communities in medicine like Maui, Paradise, California, or Malibu. The same kind of calamities can happen here. Okay, so the 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 events that you saw there is what the JPA is supposed to support. Improve the document, don't discard it. Okay, you talked about HR and legal and all this stuff. You already had it for a number of years now. All you're talking about really is to do it again. But it brings you back to staffing. Minimum engine standards nationally are are four people on an engine. How we can operate with one person on an engine, I have no clue. So there you go. Um improve the standards. You got a potentially another district coming in wanting to join. That should tell you all you need to know about the value of the JPA. Somebody wants to join. The workshop's great for understanding um what goes on, and I encourage you to go to a workshop, learn the job a little bit so that you can make informed deci- decisions, because this is a money item, and we're all concerned about the dollar. But levies um is a wonky way of of trying to have an essential service that our citizens rely upon. Law, fire, EMS, that's basic.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. That's your three minutes. Appreciate your comments.
I'm open to any questions, too, so.
We can't ask?
I'm approaching.
Was that a yes or a no?
Council, you you know, it's uh typically it's public comment, so we don't devolve into debate. Uh sometimes
It's not intent.
You know, you can certainly contact Mr. Glass independently and uh share your findings, but um just due to some of the challenges that other entities of government have had, when questions start coming back and forth, I'd prefer to keep it at just comment. Any other public comment?
Rini Hansen? Bernard Frichette?
Good evening. Evening. Uh Bernie Frichette, living in Bonner County, worked for the fire department, been here since uh two thousand two as a volunteer. Since uh October two thousand three as a Sagal employee. I most certainly speak speaking support of the JPA, and I just wanna while you go through this process, I want you to picture something. I want you to picture going to like Seattle Fire, Boston Fire, Houston Fire, any fire department, and say what we're gonna do is we're gonna take your fire department and split into three different entities and picture those entities having the same focus, the same mentality, the same group think, the same training, and the same efficiency that you rely on us to deliver it to you and what you pay us to do, because what will, what will naturally happen over time is Sagal, Westside, Sandpoint, and potentially Northside, if we were to speak for them as part of this group, even though they're not, will slowly start to fragment, and they will get their own identities. And it's not to say that we won't perform our function as a fire department, but I challenge you to prove me wrong, that we will perform as high as 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 you want us to and as efficiently as a fire department if we're separate because of the group think, the culture, the training, and that glue that is so essential to any entity. Picture taking the city of Sandpoint, this building, and taking all of your, all of your offices and spreading them throughout the city. You would say, we're not as efficient. Well, picture having to go into a fire to, into a fire and save lives, because we need to be efficient, because you pay us to be efficient, and you pay us to be excellent, and you pay us to take care of the districts, taxpayers. So while you go through this process, think about going to Seattle Fire and saying, we're gonna take your twenty seven dis, your twenty seven stations and giving you nine, you nine, and you nine, but we want you to perform at this as high as of a level, because I challenge you to prove me wrong. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Bernie.
Mr. Mayor, no one else has indicated any interest in speaking on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh so we have a motion and a second on the table. Um any further council discussion?
May I hear that again, the motion?
My motion was to table this for a future special council meeting to be held in April, focused specifically on Sandpoint's continued participation in the JPA.
Can I ask the council a question? Will this allow what the fire personnel are trying to share? Will that allow them time to present what it is they want us to understand and hear?
Uh Councilwoman Duquette, I believe what I understand is uh the various agencies would have the opportunity to provide a presentation, in a written presentation with data and information uh that would be compiled in a packet prior to the council meeting. In terms of Mr. Glass's comments uh to learn more and uh understand um that understanding that might come out of a workshop, uh probably not, but um Probably not, but that's what I understand the task to be right now is compile the information. And present it to the council at a special meeting.
And I thought. Councilwoman Rule said they could present, make a presentation.
Councilwoman Duquette, I believe we discussed that and I thought there was confirmation that or agreement that it would be. Public comment after the council digest and reviews the information. Anyone correct me if I misheard that?
That's not what I said, though. The presentation would be like by West Side by.
The the presentation opportunities would be public presentation is I understand that Councilwoman Duquette, which would be. Three minutes. There is a process where you can give three minutes to another speaker, so in theory each entity would have. Six minutes to speak to the the subjects that are covered in their in their reports or packages.
Mr. Mayor, I think if I might clarify, I what I think Councilwoman Duquette is trying to ask. Originally, that's what I had envisioned, but after Councilwoman Welker spoke, I agree that. A staff report that. Takes into account the other districts and is in close communication with them and allows them to. Build part of a PowerPoint and then and give it to our staff to have document, written documentation packets for us to read. Thorough information in a written format so that it can be read days ahead of time and processed. And then reiterated in a in a spoken presentation format through staff. And then for us to have another opportunity to listen to public comment as Mayor Grim just noted. And then for us to make a decision at that point. Or to choose to table it for further information if we so decide to do that or. At that point, does that clarify what my intention was?
And so like they would present a PowerPoint we would get to. They would be speaking, sharing, not just writing.
No.
No, they would, if they had, if they had, if they made a PowerPoint, they would turn it into staff. Staff could present all of their information. And as succinct ordered.
Still like on a Friday for a Wednesday meeting or something.
You would get your packet on Friday like you always do. You could look through every single page of the PowerPoint and every single written document. That's been given to staff and then you could process all that and then they would present in person again on Wednesday. For three minutes. No, our staff would present all that information in the packet to us and then we would make a decision. At that point, after we hear public comment.
There's a second on the table.
Okay, so hearing no further discussion.
Last, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, would Counselor Duquette, maybe I'm hearing you a different way. Would, and this would be a question to all the council, would there be an opportunity to speak to both West Side? To and as well as to Segal for a question and answer that evening besides just having them come up and. Have their public comment at three minutes. And I guess I'm posing that to all the councillors, because I I think that might be where you're getting at. Is do we have an opportunity to speak with everyone involved that night beyond just the three minute public comment mark?
So that's when we do a workshop.
So at that point, Councilman Espiral, you're saying if.
I'm not saying I want that. I'm saying.
If there's a feeling at that.
Either we need a workshop or we need to.
Mr. Mayor, if I might. If you're getting your packet on Friday and you do your due diligence and you do your homework, then we could have contact information. If there are more questions that you want answered, then you could contact the other districts and discuss it with them or ask questions of staff. And ask them to get you more information if it's not as thorough as you feel it needs to be in that packet.
If I may.
Councilman Welker.
I feel like there are certain members of this council that just need more time to learn and educate themselves about. The pros and cons of Sandpoint's continued participation in the JPA. That's fine. I think pushing this back to April is is fine. We did do the the workshop. My personal opinion is that we don't need to replicate a workshop that we've already had. We've all received lots of communication from different stakeholders since that workshop. If more time is still needed, that's good, but I I ultimately, we are charged with making decisions that are. Purely in the best interest of our constituents, the citizens of Sandpoint, the taxpayers of Sandpoint. So. Facilitating opportunities for additional rural fire districts to join. And 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 authority that we're a agreement that we are currently a part of. That's not in our wheelhouse. That's not really what we, I believe, should be considering right now. We have, if 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 members of this this council need more time to gather more information, to learn more about. What they need to know to make a decision that's in the best interest of our constituents, that's what we're we're doing right now. But to open it up for opportunities for the the districts to share again what they've already shared with us. The arguments for why it's in our interest to stay in the in the agreement, then I don't. I I don't personally think we need to go replicate that workshop situation again. That's why my motion was to have, in fact, I. Think this could be just included as an agenda item with a regular council meeting, because I don't believe it's a a three hour workshop we're talking about here. But Legal suggested that we have a special. Yes, so a special meeting is my recommendation, and that's that's my motion.
There's a motion and a second. It seems pretty clear. Any further discussion?
May I just make a comment that I do my due diligence. I would read the packet. I would be prepared. I think it's a pretty important decision. That's all. I I think it needs more than a just an agenda item, action. Listen to three minute comments. I'll take the packet. I'll do what I need to do. I just think it's a pretty important decision.
But I would point out that in the in the weeks between now and then. You can do all the personal outreach that you.
I plan on it.
Thank you, council members. Hearing no further comment, I'm pretty clear on my marching orders. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Welker.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Duquette.
I'm gonna have to say no.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the first item under new business, council will consider a recommendation of the Sandpoint Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. To extend expenditure period for two capital projects from eight years to eleven years to move a hundred thousand dollars from the downtown two-way conversion project Ontario Street. To the Ontario Street realignment. Just for council background. Per state statute, anytime you collect impact fees, there's a time limit on expenditure for those fees, first in, first out basis. In this case, we have collected transportation impact fees to address specific projects. The the project that this first project that this item addresses is the Pion and Fifth Signal. Which was wrapped into the larger two-way downtown conversion, obviously due to time and negotiations with ITD. That process has taken then longer than most of us ever thought it would. And as a result, our collections for those transportation funds have been. Pushed out to their limit. The the code does, state code does allow for a holdover of those funds. With a recommendation from the Impact Fee Advisory Committee and with a justification basis for why those funds are being held longer. There's no specific case law that I'm aware of that. Tells you exactly what that rationale and reasoning needs to be, other than a rationale and a reasoning. So in this case, it is to extend the holdover for those funds and then. The total funds collected for the transportation fee category allocated to that two-way conversion. Exceeded exceed the final design plans. So the next action is to direct those funds towards the next product in that transportation. Priority list from the Impact Fee Study, which is that Ontario realignment. So with that, certainly entertain any questions from the council on this item.
I have questions. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Duquette.
Why would it be Ontario? They got that hundred thousand, I guess. I'm wondering what the priority of that was.
If you look at the Tishler Vice Impact Fee Study, that that street is, that alignment is a very high priority. Some of it also has to do with the growth related deficiency versus the existing deficiency. For example, if a street were deficient today, or we had a problem with an intersection. If it was an old deficiency that we've had, not related to growth, we would be limited to how we could spend impact fees. Dollars on that project. If the issue is growth related. It makes it eligible for impact for use, which is spelled out in that Tishler Vice Report. So in this case, that is a very dangerous intersection. It's the highest priority. It's the next in line for city. Priorities in terms of design and construction. So that is why this project was chosen.
I thought that I saw that it had a D rating on the multimodal plan. I don't see that it's that. Trafficked. It it was just my wondering why that was a priority. And then I guess I have one more question, and this is just because I'm not aware. Can that money be used for paving? Or does that have to be for street construction or redoing? Can paving be part of that? Could that hundred thousand go to paving streets instead of realigning Ontario, I guess?
No, in the sense that impact fees can't be used for maintenance or operations. They go for capacity expansion or to cure. Growth-related deficiencies. Any other council questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rule.
I have a similar question. Where exactly in the Tishler BIS study does it prioritize Ontario as? The next priority, or was that a staff decision or who made that decision? Was that made in Impact Fee Study Committee? So who decided on that? I know that they were all grouped together, but I didn't see, and maybe I missed, if you can point it out to me. Where that was prioritized as number two.
Yeah. Whoever controlling the screen, you can scroll up to that short term project list from the Impact Fee Study, a little bit higher. There you go. So these are the projects that were identified in the Tishler BIS study. You can see the, you know, one to five year projects and the six to ten year projects. With any transportation related project, especially when they're not incremental, they're plan based. You you want to have some flexibility so you can jump to the timing based on what's happening in the city in that area. So these were the projects identified in that Tishler BIS study. It's my understanding that the multimodal transportation plan and related concerns. Historical concerns about the alignment of that intersection and the hazards there are what directed this to be the priority and staff. When I came on board, said this was the next city project focus point, so that's where it was derived. We could probably get more information for you at this point, if you needed it, but.
Is there staff here to speak to that as far as who prioritized that? Because I I've read this list and I understand, but these are groups. There's nowhere in here. Does it say? Priority, and there's nowhere really in the multimodal plan that that prioritizes this significantly. So I just want to know where that, who made that decision, where that decision was made, and I would like to hear from staff on that.
So there's not staff here right now who can speak to that. What I would say is that, so in our multimodal plan. You also have to match up on the far right side of this chart, you'll see gross percentage shares. And where those projects align, for example, in Ontario Ave is ninety three percent growth related. So we want to get the most bang for our buck with these hundred thousand dollars, and we have to balance our available funding for other street projects. So in this case, we want to use as much of those impact fees for a growth eligible project. So again, that Ontario Street is ninety three percent deficient due to growth. So that is one compelling factor. When staff brought it to me, I know historically there's been. And maybe Corey could speak to some of the near misses or accidents at that intersection. I know historically, even from back in two thousand fifteen, this alignment has been a huge problem. In the city and is very dangerous. In fact, Cody Van Dyke used to say it's the most dangerous intersection in the city of Sandpoint.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, just to make a comment, the Woodland Drive comes out at a ninety five percent growth rate, so. Again, just more information on if we're trying to get the most bang for our buck, wouldn't that be above this other intersection and so. Again, just trying to understand.
Yeah.
I understand the the danger of the Ontario intersection, the Woodland Drive. Can you give me some more detail on that?
I believe Woodland Drive is currently being designed and realigned as part of the SURA Urban Renewal Northern Project, so. I think that has changed dramatically in scope since this fee schedule and these projects were adopted.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask, Mr. Welker's on that committee, do you know of? Any detail on that?
Are you referring to in in?
The Great Northern.
Along with Great Northern Woodland? I'm not aware of an effort to actually realign Woodland through there, though.
Well, the corner up north on Woodland.
Right, the improvements there. And in fact, I with this chart, I don't know what, I mean, even the mention of Ontario Avenue, all we have is a linear. You know, zero point zero six miles. I assume that relates to the just the angle at which it intersects. I'm not sure if that refers to from the north or from the south.
So these are pulled out of the urban area transportation plan. The city project number aligns with the urban area transportation plan. So. And and to put it in the overall kind of scope is we we had over allocated essentially. Impact fee transportation funds for the downtown two-way reversion. So instead of facing a situation where we would have to go through the cumbersome and challenging process of returning those dollars. We're trying to revert those dollars to the next highest priority on our impact fee eligible. Transportation improvements, and this is the one that staff brought and it was preceded my. Becoming mayor, this was the next in line from Holly and Eric and Brandon, based on everything they've been working on.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would ask that in the future if they can do a little bit more of a presentation so we know why funds are being moved and why things are being prioritized. And that becomes more transparent for the public too, as there might be other people on some of these other roads that are listed, wondering why. They didn't get the funds put in their neighborhood as opposed to putting it here and I guess I'm just more used to staff kind of. Going through this stuff and and clarifying it a little bit more than is clarified here. I don't feel. Comfortable moving money around in an amended budget line item without. Thorough understanding of why those decisions were made, and I feel like if this preceded you, then staff would have been appropriate to be here to explain it to us.
True, understood, and Councilwoman Rule, I am happy at the next council meeting to have staff give you a full presentation on. The deficiencies and hazards and why this street was is the next priority for our street projects.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we approve this, can we assume that that hundred thousand will go into preliminary design? Or I, there's probably some right of way acquisition acquired with this product required for this project as well.
It's a big project.
So are you, will you be directing our infrastructure staff, our project managers to begin working on this later this year in preparation for perhaps. Doing some of this design in twenty twenty five?
It will come to the council as that evolves. This is just the first step. It was an immediate need to, because that timeline was sunsetting. To address this issue, so we didn't exceed that eight year period. Yes, this will all be coming to the council and I would imagine even if after that presentation, council had concerns about. Higher priority areas, as long as they're impact fee eligible, we could reallocate at that time as well.
So my next question would be, this is, the the impact fee is just in the transportation budget? Or is it collected specifically per project?
It good, well, it's segregated by type of fee, so there's the parks, police.
Yeah, I understand that. That's not.
So the trans- transportations are collected in a bucket. Transportations are collected in a bucket. And then this capital improvement plan is what we work off of to allocate those dollars towards.
So we're voting on the fact that we need to increase the timeline. But at this point in time, we wouldn't necessarily have to amend that money around because it's all the same bucket.
It is all the same bucket. And the priority projects, it just was, makes sense that the over-budgeted amount for these fees for the downtown two-way rolled into the next project on the priority list. But that project will be coming to you for design scoping, the typical process.
And could we choose to move the money around and amend the budget at that point after we've had the presentation?
You could. At this point, this is the cleanest way to separate this money from the downtown two-way. Of course, and this really isn't amending the budget. It's, these are all going to have to go into capital projects in next year's budget. You're going to have full review and input on those. So we wouldn't be doing anything this fiscal year on this project. This is just to direct these dollars away from that two-way reversion.
Can we scroll to the other piece of where it shows the hundred thousand dollars moving, please? So the way it reads to me is amended budget on those top lines. And then if you scroll all the way down, that thousand dollars is put over there. So now I'm confused because it says.
We are not opening the budget right now.
Okay. I just really wanted to make sure because the way, there's nothing there. And then there's money there to me in written format. This looks like we're amending the budget.
And?
It's just an adjustment to the accounting method for the transportation impact fees as they currently exist.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further council discussion? Any public comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is Sarah motion? Boy, I'm sorry. Sarah motion?
Would you like to propose one?
A motion to accept the recommendation from your.
Thank you. Funda motion to accept the recommendation.
I would, I can, I can make a motion to accept the recommendation to extend expenditure period for two capital projects from eight to eleven years and move one hundred thousand dollars from the downtown two-way conversion project to the Ontario Street realignment project.
I could second it.
Motion by Councilman Walker, second by Councilwoman Duquette. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eight B has been removed from the council agenda, which leads us to item nine, executive session. Final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code, section seventy-four, two oh six, one, B and C, to consider evaluation dismissal or disciplining of, or complaints or charges brought against public officer, employee, staff member, individual, agent, or consider acquiring interest in rail property agency.
Go move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Dick, second by Councilman Spiro. A roll call vote?
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will move into executive session in this room.
Thinking of five minutes.
Sure, five-minute recess. Reconvening at seven thirty.